Anyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Go ahead and get started. I'm just going to read the mission statement. The mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute to their future educational career and community endeavors. Can we get approval of the present agenda?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Next, we're going to go to public comment, and I just want to remind everyone, public comment, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow the BOE to hear as a whole any comments that are related to an agenda item or school business. During this public comment period, the Board of Education will hear comments from students, parents, employees, district residents, and district property and business owners for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes in total and three minutes per speaker. The BOE president will recognize speakers who will proceed to the spot provided for public comment, state their full name, organization they represent if applicable, and the agenda item or school matter they wish to discuss. Speakers are expected to comply with the Chatham Central School District Policy 2310 in regard to content. Would anyone like to speak? We are going to have our student representative speak a little bit later. She is unable to be here till around seven. Oh, board member comment. Okay, and then any board members that would like to comment?
I just want to comment that it's really great seeing the bulk of this year's project come close to conclusion here. And I think the students actually, and what I've been seeing, feel a little bit better being in nicer facilities, so.
I agree. I was at the open house the other night, and it was lovely. Everybody was walking around poking in their, you know, heads into different classrooms. And it was, it was neat. It was part taking a self-guided tour as well as meeting with teachers. It was very lively, and I enjoyed the open house. It was my last one, and I enjoyed it very much.
Thank you. I'll just make one quick comment. On Friday, Mr. Courtney, we had a professional development conference, and it was about communication styles, and it was very beneficial. It was nice to learn about each other's communication styles and also guess at maybe what some of the people in this room's communication styles were. And we thought it'd be a great professional development to bring in for, for the board. Andrew, if anything?
Yeah, this was a really unique PD opportunity. It's the first time NISBA ever did it. It was geared for board presidents and superintendents. So it was really interesting to have several different districts around the Capitol region with the superintendent and the board president. And they did a really nice job doing an inventory on kind of communication aspects of each other, how we work, how we lead, how we, how we, you know, kind of run as, as professionals in our, in our districts, right? And it was really interesting because Dawn and I had similarities, but we also had a lot of differences. And within this workshop, it talked to us about, all right, how you work with each other's different styles and how you complement each other's styles, right? And we, as we were sitting there, we were thinking, what a great professional development for our board. You know, our board is a newer board, as we all know. Most of the board members have been, have been seated for, you know, less than, less than two years, right? So we felt what a good way for us to kind of work together and get to know our different styles by having them come and do something similar to our board. So Dawn and I were talking about it. So I guess, Dawn, do you want to propose that we bring that in for, because if you remember, we haven't done a formal retreat. We had a, what did we call it, Debbie? We had a workshop. We had a workshop, work session. But we haven't had a board training retreat. So that was a thought of putting something together like we had because we thought it was really beneficial for everyone.
And they did say they could put it together for a board. So if everyone was interested, it'd be something I would set up.
And I was thinking we could do that with a combination of some financial stuff, too. I know we talked about adding that, too. So those would be the two topics.
If anyone has any...
Yeah, I'd be in support of a, of a combination on communications and I guess public budget literacy would be great. It's school-specific or not, I think that the thing people really struggle with is public budgets are different.
Yeah.
Were you thinking like the July after?
I, I was thinking we could plan it sooner this year. There's no rush, no hurry. We would need to see what their, you know, what their availability is. But we would pick a, a time, I think, doing it because we didn't, we did not do one necessarily in the summer. We could do it at any time that works for all of you, as long as we have their availability.
You think you can find one or two people to like come down from Albany or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. NISBA would, we were, NISBA put this on, and we were thinking, and I think they actually would be one of the people that would probably come.
Yeah, it would be one of the three that were there in the room. They're kind of pushing it off on each other, but one of the three would be, would be the one.
But it's up to your interest.
I think we'd all get a lot out of it.
And we could use it, you know, as we're making decisions and as we're thinking about how each other, how we all work. It was really, really interesting.
I, I guess the, the one comment I would have would be just timing. Do we? Clearly, we have to ask them what they can do, but should, have you guys thought about what to suggest?
Whatever's good with you guys.
Whatever is good with everyone.
The big question I would ask is, we want to do this, you know, over the winter, or do we want to push till after the election? I don't have an opinion. But I think that, yeah, we missed the summer opportunity, so maybe some catch-up.
Yeah.
But I don't feel strongly about it.
I can send out a poll and see everyone's availability, and we can work from there.
Because we didn't have it, it might be nice to have something for all of us and our people and the answer in person.
The reason why I was thinking that perhaps in the summertime is because, you know, I won't be here. So you're going to have a brand-new board member. Maybe it is more beneficial to have the brand, brand-new board member. I mean, that's, I mean, I'm okay with doing this. I mean, I would love this PD. But you may get more benefit out of it with a super-brand-new board member, like in July. I don't know. That's just my thought, but I'm.
Totally agree with you guys. It's more when you want to do it. We could save it for next summer, or you, you know, it doesn't matter.
I think, I think I would argue for something prior to budget season or, or, you know, afterwards through budget season. And, and not to try to shoehorn that in the middle of that, that schedule gets a little tighter for us.
I agree. If we can't fit it in in the next two months, then I think we probably have to table it till the summer. But let's see if we can find some things. I think we would all benefit from it.
And maybe I would start with seeing when they're available, pick, have them send us a couple of dates, and then, and Debbie can send out a, one of our grand doodle polls, right?
Yeah. Picking dates is so hard, though, so to say. Okay. All right.
Dawn, just on one more note on a board comment, just, you all received the information from me about the NISBA annual meeting last week, and I tried to be as detailed as possible on the resolutions. But one thing, we always look at that as being very dominated by Long Island and the southern tier. And while that is not totally untrue, there were very strong voices this year from Albany, from Saratoga. And I felt that there was a better representation, really, than there was last year when I did this. And the resolutions, you can see them, but there's lively debate. Not really heated, but people definitely had a great deal of opinion from everything, from vaccine mandates to whether we should be serving, allowing whole milk to be served in schools again, or we should be doing that. So it covered a wide gamut of things. If anyone has questions, certainly get in touch with me. I'd be glad to answer.
Just thank you, Linda, for participating and giving us the overview.
I have a question for you, actually. Not having studied what I probably should have studied, was there anything that you think felt a little controversial or polarizing that we should be aware of that's maybe coming towards us?
I think one of the things that was, and I had made a mistake on this when I put it out, was the implementation of mandatory recess. And there was quite a debate about having mandatory recess for all children in elementary grade levels or schools where there are elementary grade levels in addition to physical education class. And from one perspective, that was understandable. But what did pass was a resolution that called for NISBA to advocate for recess time being considered instructional time. And I was really surprised that that went through. But it did. That only means, of course, that they're going to advocate for that. It doesn't mean that that's going to become a reality. But that was one that I thought there was a lot of contention around.
And just, just so the board knows, we, we do have recess, so we're meeting that mandate. But a lot, you'd be surprised, a lot of districts around New York State do not have daily recess. That's not a given in many places, but we, we are meeting that. So if that is a mandate, we're already meeting that. And they, when we're reporting our daily attendance, we literally go by the minute, right? So to me, it's positive that we are able to use that as instruction time because we can use that as part of our academic day. Because if you don't, you got to subtract it, and then that's less time that we're reporting. It literally, we have to report every minute that our, our students are in session to make sure we meet the mandate of 180 days. So yeah, this is interesting. So we can use those, those minutes, which is, well, we don't know yet, but that's what, that's what NISBA is advocating for.
Well, Andrew, if I could ask, do you think that that's a popular position or opinion among administrators? Just generally statewide?
So I think it, I think it depends. I think it depends because some districts, it could be an extra expense, right? Because you would have to hire recess aids if you're not already doing it. So it would be an expense for districts that aren't doing it already. But we already happen to be doing that. So the cost would be recess aids. So you would need more supervision, more, more people to do that work. So for that reason, I bet you it wouldn't be popular for those districts that are doing it because they're going to sell, say it's another unfunded, unfunded mandate.
That's interesting.
When you read through them, again, if you have any question, let me know. We can bring it up here again.
You, Linda.
Well, classifying it as instructional time doesn't need to be linked to the mandate.
Doesn't need to be. But I bet Linda's right. That's probably the next step, right, making it? And this is, I know I can tell you this is being advocated at the state level by teachers' union. They're advocating that because they're looking at kids need it, right? Kids, they need that time. So it's a good reason behind it, but it just could cost extra money for districts.
It was interesting that there were the two resolutions, one to have it and then another one which passed, and then one to make it part of instructional time, which I did not think would pass. And yet it did, but we had a lot of questions about how that was going to look.
I, I could tell you from the superintendent's organization and principals' organizations, they are not, I bet you they would support it being part of the instructional time, but they are not supporting it being a mandate due to the expense.
That's interesting.
Yeah, those, I, I find, I find all of them, so, because it's just so. And it depends on the district. So it's hard to make that decision because you're dealing with so many people that are doing things differently. So it's hard to come up with one united front, right?
Yes. So you know, Chatham voted yes on it being part of the day in addition to PE, but I cast a vote on no on the instructional time. That was after listening to both sides of the issue, and that's what I thought was the best thing to do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's great. Thank you.
Can't even imagine no recess for those little kids.
Well, I mean, that comes back to, this is the Chatham community. This is the local. I can't picture the Chatham community supporting taking recess away. I think that this is who we are, and unless they come up with a very good reason to do it, I think that's going to remain a tradition here.
In my wife's district, they frequently have to cancel recess because it's dangerous to operate recess because they don't have the staff.
It's really a staffing thing, it's really.
Like, it could be, you're in a room, kids are safely confined, and then literally they can run away, and there's not enough people to chase them down out of the street. And that's a, I could, I could really see that being drawn at a lot of schools. But thankfully, not here, not here.
Yeah, no, we're good here. We're meeting the mandate. If we have a mandate, we're good.
That's who we are.
And a lot of districts locally do do it. Some don't, but you know, it's interesting.
All right. Well, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the superintendent report.
All right. Good evening. So I first want to start off by thanking each and every one of our board members. So I don't know if you remember, but it's Board Appreciation Month or Board Appreciation Week. So I want to thank you on behalf of the district, on behalf of the students, the faculty, the staff, the administrators. I want to thank you for your commitment to the district. Now, I, this, what you do, I, I'm in awe with all the time because each and every one of you are volunteering for this work. And we know there's, there's a lot of difficult things that come upon us as a school district. But it's, I, I hope you find it rewarding and exciting, and I hope you know that you're making a huge difference among every single student, faculty, staff, administrators, and myself. So it's a true pleasure to work with each and every one of you. Thank you for everything that you do, and we appreciate your service to the district. Let's give our Board of Education members a round of applause. So to thank you, Miles, if you have anything to say, Miles, you can come up. And then I know he has a little token of appreciation from the high school.
So this year, the high school has prepared our token of appreciation, and more specifically, our art students, led by their instructor, Tina Fahy, have created something really special for you.
And we have one absence. You can give one to Deb or Steve. Get open it, open it and show it off.
Oh, I'm so happy because I broke my last leaf.
These are beautiful. So these are handcrafted, these are beautiful.
So that's from our ceramics class using our brand-new art classroom. Newly vented kiln.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
I just wish I had a student's initials on the back of mine, but let me know who read that. But that's gorgeous.
So there is a ceramics class, so it's, you know, the students from that class, if you're wondering. Well, thank you all for all that you do. Okay. So that was my first part. I wanted to start there. So I had the privilege, about two weeks ago, Terry and I did, we went to the high school faculty, and we went, we started, Miles, Miles had us come to the faculty meeting, or we asked him if we can come to the faculty meeting. And we just had a really nice, open discussion just about, about, really about elective options in, in Chatham. And, and I shared the goal that we talked about is building partnerships, building community partnerships with our local community here in Chatham and coming up with opportunities for internships, apprenticeships, and to utilize our local community here in Chatham rather than sending our kids out to different communities all the time. So we had a really nice discussion, and I have to say, I was, was really impressed with how open everyone was, how people listened, and how people got excited about it. So we asked them to think out of the box, think about electives, think about opportunities. We have so many special teachers with so many gifts here in Chatham, and they do so many great courses. But let's start thinking how we can utilize our, our local community to help with some of those different programs because we know that they're interested. So we talked about that. Teachers were thinking and brainstorming already. We sent the proposal form out that we use here as a district. If they wanted to propose anything for next school year, to bring it to our attention. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get some different ideas out of the box that we will, we will present to you throughout the year. I told them we would need any of those by December, by the end, by the end of December, so we could make decisions and see if we can budget for them and see what the cost would be, if there's even a cost. Utilizing what we have is really the, the key component. So I just wanted to tell you that, and that, and that really meets the goal that we talked about of building those partnerships. Terry, did you want to say anything about that?
I think sharing the little things that you already know about the, you know, the partnership with Harringtons at MED and the What's So Cool About Manufacturing? And just hearing that and sharing it with the high school team was, I think, illuminating to them, and you could see they started to think about other options. So really, I, I don't know, looking at everyone in the room that day, there's a lot of smart people sitting there and creative thinkers, so I'm excited.
Yeah, we'll see what they come up with. And even if we came up with one or two ideas for next year and continue to build on them, I told them, we're not looking to change everything, but maybe one or two different ideas and different partnerships that we can put together by different, by creating different elective class to meet the students' needs would be, would be amazing. So I'm excited about that. We'll see what, what people come up with. No pressure on people, though, of course, but just something we wanted to put out there as one of our, as one of our initiatives as a district. The other really exciting thing that we're working on is the portrait of a Chatham graduate. So just kind of share, I don't think I grabbed it with me. But New York State has put together what they call a New York State Portrait of a Graduate. It's New York State-based. It's based out of several years of stakeholders coming together throughout the state. And from the conference that Terry and I went to, this is going to really be the, to us, it looks like and it sounds like the be-all, end-all to New York State education. I think a lot's going to be tied to it. We know a lot's going to be tied to it, and it's going to be a really important part of the state. So, but the thing is, in Chatham, we have something called the Chatham Capstone, which is, which is already an amazing, amazing piece. So our challenge is going to be to take what we're already doing with our Capstone project and to take the new requirements of the Portrait of a Graduate from New York State, and we want to make it and put it together as a portrait of a Chatham graduate. So this is going to be a year-long initiative. We, we talked to teachers about it. We actually met with the senior team today to talk to them about how they can play a role in that because we don't want to, we don't want to stop anything that we're doing. We want to just, we want to take what we're doing and continue to expand upon it. So we asked for committee members so we can start a, a group to do this work. And what we decided to do is we're going to start with teachers and administrators first, and then we're going to add parents and students to this group as well. We want to just get some sort of a product out, some sort of a draft out, and that way we'll then invite parents and students for their feedback and make tweaks together to it. We're starting this initiative in November. We're going to meet once a month all the way until March. And the goal is, is that we'll have something ready to go for the start of next school year. So I'm really excited about this. The thing is, we could just take the New York State requirement and say, all right, this is what we're doing. But we need to personalize it and make it our own for Chatham to fit our students, to fit our teachers, and to fit our community. So that's what we're going to do. It's going to be, it's going to be a big task, but it's an exciting task. And all of our PD, most of our PD and a lot of our goals next year will be tied around to this portrait because the goal will be that all of our students are doing these things all the way through. One other idea that we kind of came up with today, we were talking about with the senior team, is maybe actually even having two of these, having a portrait of an elementary student and then a portrait of a, of a graduate, right? Because we talked about with our senior team that it's hard to use the same tool pre-K to 12, right? So if we make something that's more specific to our younger kids so they can understand it better, but it would have to be aligned to the one that we have at the high school as well. So there's a lot of options. I think it's going to be exciting, but I want that committee to be the one that puts it together. So that's what we're working on. Like I said, that's starting in November, so we'll keep you updated as we go. And then if a board member, as we get to the second section, we would love to have you come on and, and listen. But of course, I'll be presenting to you along the way. Project update. So we, I, I have to say, there's a little bit of relief that all of our teachers can unpack at least, and they can teach in their, in their spaces. And all of our spaces are now being fully utilized, including our tech lab. Our tech lab is functioning. Of course, there's things in all the rooms, punch list items that need to be done, some, some fine tuning. There are a couple of cabinets missing that are ordered that will be coming in hopefully by, in sometime, hopefully by December. But right now, everything's usable. So they, they put stuff in place where we can use it no matter what. There were some, some cabinets that were ordered incorrectly that we have to come in, and so there's some, some things going on. But for the most part, the project is, is, is in good shape at this point. Our bathrooms are being very close to being open. We'll be getting updated tomorrow. Mike and I will be part of that. We have our, our team meeting tomorrow. But now, to this point, it's punch list items, and I'm really, really happy that our teachers and classrooms are all functioning, and it's going really well. So I want to thank Mike Chuddy for all his hard work on this project. It hasn't been easy, but I have to say, we've worked together and thank our community for all of their hard work. But the project looks beautiful. I'm really excited about that. Next year, once, after next summer, next fall, we would like to schedule an open house once everything is complete and invite the community in to see everything, even if you don't have a, a child here in Chatham, to be able to see the whole project finished. Because by next, hopefully by next September, the entire project will be done. So it's exciting. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Andrew. Matt?
Okay. I'm just going to ask about the 10 containers out back. I think a couple of them are ours, but what's the plan for the rest of them?
Want to talk about that, Mike?
So right now, we are going to keep a couple, and then we're going to, we are, they've taken a few away. We, we have them, you know, scheduled to be taken away, the majority of them.
Okay, they're taking the ones they brought.
Yeah, yeah, that's theirs. They're going to, yeah, that, they might be keeping one there. Pretty much all the other ones in the back, they're, pretty soon, they're going to be gone. We're going to keep two, though, because we have some surplus items. We have to go through some things. So I, we also want to get some things out of the halls and stuff. So we will keep two for a little while and determine what we're going to do.
Yeah, just, it looks like a marine dock right now.
Yeah.
So.
But that'll, those, the majority will be gone soon, so.
Great. That was my only question.
Thanks, Matt. Terry, want to do the academic update?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So for my update, I thought I would share with you MTSS and where we are. So what I'll share with you is some iReady data, and I, I wanted to talk to you a little bit and just kind of, I, I think fall's a good time to review what it is and what we really learned from that. Some data tied with it, and then for this presentation, anyway, to give you a picture of what's happening in all three buildings with MTSS. So you can go to the next slide here, please. So before I jump into any of this, and you have a copy, too, that I know Deb gave you, I wanted to start with iReady. I know we talked about this this summer, and you, many of you are familiar with it, anyway, but seems like a good time just to maybe stop and review why we're doing it and what do we learn from it. So iReady, reading iReady Math is a universal screener, meaning essentially all K through 8, our kindergartners have not taken the assessment yet. They're still kind of getting used to a lot of things, so. But eventually, all K through 8 students do the diagnostic assessment. And then from that data, that's where we make a lot of decisions and impacts instruction. What is it? It's an adaptive assessment, and that term just simply means when a student answers a question, the test adapts to their answers. So if it's correct, they get a little more challenging, and if it's incorrect, they get less challenging. The, the point in that is so we, as educators, then can pinpoint specific areas of, you know, strength or areas that need some work for every individual student. That's what iReady should be showing us. What iReady is not. It's not a test with a grade. There's no, you don't get a grade from iReady. In the fall diagnostic assessment, it's a baseline. So that's where we start everything for the whole year. I'll keep going, and then I, I want to make another point to that. So what do we pull from it? What do we get from these, this, these assessments? So first off, there's an overall placement level, and that's criterion reference data. So it's based on standards. It's not comparing kids, right? It's based on standards. So in essence, with iReady, it shows you their chronological grade level. This is where they come in. A really, I think, one of the best things with iReady is it gives you a domain-specific performance. So that means for, for reading, it, it measures phonological awareness, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension with both literary and instructional texts. So those are really the domains for reading. And with math, number and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement, data, geometry. So that's important because it, it allows us, again, to dive in deeper with every individual student. So a student could do very well on vocabulary, yet maybe struggle with comprehension with informational texts. do very well on vocabulary, yet maybe struggle with comprehension with informational texts. Very common, something like that. So it is more than just that grade level piece to it. It allows us to dig in deeper. Um, there, there is a national, um, norm that can, the percentile. I don't know that that's super useful to us always. It's nice to have and look at, but, um, I think as far as really digging into how our students are doing is those first two pieces that we look at. So we just did the diagnostic for the fall and what we're looking to do there again is, is get that baseline. And the whole goal is to see growth over the course of the year. So in the winter and then in the spring, we want to see how the students are growing. Um, it allows us to differentiate for every individual student because you get obviously that data back. Um, we're also utilizing the iReady personalized instruction, um, platform. That's a part of when you use iReady. So it's not just those three diagnostic assessments. There's more lessons and things online that students do throughout the year as well. And maybe most importantly, it allows teachers to differentiate instruction for students, be that every individual student, but also putting together like small groups that maybe this group of students based on this are struggling with those domains again. So it allows for, um, an enhancement of planning for teachers. Lastly, I would just say, spring diagnostic, fall diagnostic, what's the connection? And honestly, there really isn't any. And I, I'll explain that. So I shared with all of you the, over the summer, here's where we ended, right? With that spring diagnostic. When the students come into the fall, what they're taking, the standards are all different now. So it's a, it's a different grade level. So looking at this student finished here in the spring, how come they're lower in the fall? That's actually probably predictive that that would happen because the standards are different. Um, you know, one thing, it's not a clean analogy, but it would be like taking the global history regions in September for kids in global history who have been in there for a week, right? That you wouldn't anticipate, hey, they're all going to pass this. What would you do with a volume, right? So, so it, again, it's not like a one-to-one perfect analogy, but it kind of works that way. Because, um, again, we're looking at a whole new grade level, all new standards. That's what we're looking at. Okay? Um, things to consider too. So beyond that, there's sometimes you hear, um, you know, the summer slide, right? Which I always like to say the summer dip because the slide usually tends to be temporary. Once kids come back to school, it's slide sounds like they're, they slid backwards in there. Yeah, they have to make all that up, but that dip, um, that could be a part of how kids perform, um, for the fall. And then, uh, test administration factors. And I just want to like, I've already said this before, but, uh, Kristen and Brett, when I, you know, thank them. I think we have a, you know, really addressed trying to make the iReady, um, administration work really, really well. Uh, we worked on communication with families, communication with the kids, um, administrative communication with teachers. And I, I think you can see if you've been in the two buildings, you know, a positive, um, messaging around it. Because quite honestly, if, if students don't do their best, then the data isn't the best, you know? And I know that's pretty basic to figure that, but it really matters because we're trying to use this data to individualize instruction. So that's just my intro to the data that I'm going to show you because, um, if you look at here, this is the MED um, reading. So when you look at that, the, the columns to the right would match the color that you see in the line. So, um, green, yellow, red, all the way through. So if you look at all five grades, okay? Students you see in the red right now, beginning of the year baseline, there, we're trying to grow them. The students in the yellow, that's grade level. Students in green are above grade level. So the question becomes, wow, so we have students who are below grade level, at grade level and above grade level. The first and second couple of weeks of school and that, that's very common. And what I would point out too, when you look at that is, um, those first three columns. So if we look at grade one, six percent, three percent, eighty-five percent. Those are, if you put them together on eighty-five percent and then six and three percent are above. So ninety-four percent of our kids are on or above grade level to start the year. And if you go down through grade two, three, four and five, um, we're at fifty percent or better on or above grade level in all five grades. So, um, that's really good. That's a great place to start. Um, we talked a lot together about MTSS and what we're trying to do and remember intervention. Certainly tier two, tier three, we look at, at students in the red, but we also look at students in the green. Because enrichment is an intervention as well. So trying to say those kids need an intervention, uh, you know, too, because they need to be offered more challenging and be, be pushed. So, um, that's what you're looking at with the reading. So I'll pause. Any questions? Am I making sense? Sure. So instead of using different colors, that's like the state would put, would, would put blue there. Those are even further. So if it's green, they're above grade level. If it's the lines, Andrew, that means even further, even more.
I, can, can I ask for verification of that? Because I've been looking at these iReadies for as long as I've been on the board.
Yep.
The key has been really consistent from them. They're always the same colors with the same meanings and, um, the striped green has always been mid or above grade level. Green has been early on grade level and yellow has been one grade level below. But what you just said was a little bit different than that. So I just, um, if we could get some confirmation, that would be really helpful.
Sure. Yep.
But Terry, can I just say something?
Yes.
You're right, but when we're looking at it right now, yellow is on grade level because they haven't learned the material yet.
That makes, that makes sense to me because they're not at the end of year.
Right.
At the end of the year, yellow would mean they're one grade level below. But right now, like a first grader has not learned any. So if you look at third grade, that's really impressive because they have not learned anything yet. We have a significant, the green actually is like above grade level and the double green is way above grade level. Yellow is where they should be because they haven't learned anything that iReady is testing.
And that, that makes a lot of sense that we would project that most of those yellows would be on grade by the end of the year. That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, no, perfect. And that, that's kind of that spring, fall piece that I was talking about too, because there, the colors don't change, but what you're interpreting does because it's, it's, it's different time of year and the, what you're analyzing is different. So that's, yeah. Okay. Um, any other questions?
I, well, I would love a, why do you think grade three is an outlier? Because that seems like it's more than just like a kid or two. Um, so it's amazing.
Yep.
Uh, why is it amazing?
I mean, some things I can say and Kristen, feel free to jump in. I, I'll give a lot of credit to our, our teachers that, you know, really committing to the science of reading and, um, looking, talking with the teachers about what they're focusing on. Um, vocabulary, spelling, a lot of the things that are assessed in those domains. I think the teachers have done a really nice job. Um, focusing on those things in class in grade two. So they came in in grade three and, and again, you know, and it is one snapshot in time. So you wouldn't want to say we're going to throw out the grade three standards and move them all to fourth or fifth grade or anything like that. But on that, on those days of testing, our third graders were more than prepared and, and did really well.
So ju- just to be a little bit more specific there, other than the teachers did a great job.
Yeah.
So this is, um, fall. So presumably being on grade level is something that would, would not have been achieved like all in the first couple of weeks of school. So we're really looking for at least a chunk of that story, what happened the year before that and the year before that.
Yes.
If we were to just stare at this graph, if you were to forecast that the same thing that happened in grade three is going to happen to those grades two students based on where they're at, you think that that's a natural trajectory?
I would like to say, I hope so. That would be, that would be excellent. I wouldn't, you know, I, again, I, I always get a little nervous only because the, the assessment, I haven't, you know, I don't, I haven't seen it. I don't, so I don't want to get too predictive, but um, like that grade three cohort, right? It'll be interesting to see how they progress on only this year, but then that's something you could look to next year. Where do they start out next year? We wouldn't want to compare the, the assessment data, but where would grade four in twenty twenty-six be? It'll be interesting just to, to see that, right?
But we could look at last year right now because we have that now.
Yep. Yep. And that cohort is grade two. Where, where were we? Yeah. And we do that quite frequently, actually. Go back and look at a year or two before.
The other.
I, it's too much work for me to do right now, but.
The other thing I think this reflects is grade, grades one and two, over the course of the last three years, have done a lot of work looking at what their CKLA does, what it doesn't do. And I think what third grade, what second grade did was it, like the way we've always kind of visioned in our brain is that K to two is learning to read, then you get to third grade and you're reading to learn. I think second grade put a lot of reading to learn in their curriculum. So not only is it just wrote, learning the words, learning the letters, learning all the blends and the sounds and the, you know, and all the phonics, but there's also a piece of the reading and understanding it and comprehending it. So because third grade is very heavy on comprehension and, and writing and understanding what you're reading. And I think second grade rec- recognize that there was a little bit of that lacking in the CKLA. And so they kind of pushed some of that into their teaching. So I, I, I know they worked really hard at looking at what our kids need and putting it in. And I think that probably is some of that is being reflected in that grade.
Okay. Um, you can go ahead, Eric, to the next one. And the next slide, this is, or you can go back one if you would. It looks similar, but that's math. So again, um, all grades more than half are yellow and green. So, you know, and in some way I always, if you think about it, you know, that traditional bell curve too, right? The yellow would be at the, the big part of it and that follows here. Um, but again, the fact that our students are with their baseline starting as high as they are, I think is a good thing. So.
I, I, can I ask about this? If we could just tell a story about this in, in general? I, I, because I just want to make sure I'm understanding the data.
Sure.
Correctly. It seems like at the beginning of that grade one through five story arc here, um, really close to on grade level, almost universally. As things get more, as the skills gets, get more differentiated and challenging, it seems like, um, there's a persistent, uh, deficit there, um, that we don't see in grade one or two. Um, there's not much of a story here because it's just some pictures on a graph and I'm sure you guys are looking at much deeper stories than that.
Yeah.
But where is that leading us to, to address the, you know, at lea- at least this year, clearly like there's things that could be happening next year or the year after. What are we doing this year to address? I'm looking at the two years behind, grade three, four, five.
So that's where that the domain piece comes in, looking at each kid and how they performed. That's where you can really drill down into, like I, I can tell you with reading in both buildings, comprehension of informational text was an area that we identified immediately from the data that we need to focus on. So I need to answer your question. Our, our instruction can be improved and enhanced and changed from this data based on that. I agree, like just looking at, here are the scores. It gives you a very quick, colorful little snapshot, but when we drill down into those domains, that tells us exactly what we need to do and what, um, instructional areas we need to focus on. So, and the same is true with math, you know, just those.
I had a, a student, um, that, um, teach, they're at the beginning of the year. Um, they're finishing up primary ed and, um, the teacher gives them this sort of like, um, it's not quite the beginning of the year, but it was clearly a baseline assessment, wrapping up a lot of skills from last year. And it was touching a lot of different domains. There was this one question that was just super challenging. Me as a parent, I'm like, well, how am I supposed to support my child? I'm not having the tools like the iReady dashboard. I went and looked at, okay, they're having a problem with a certain type of, um, division and went and figured out the lesson that could support that skill, but it's time consuming. I can't imagine doing that for a whole classroom of students each week. That would be like a whole second full-time job. So like how ready to eat is that customized curriculum that iReady is spinning out?
Well, the one good thing is I mentioned the, the iReady personalized learning, the online lessons, those address all of that. That's one benefit to it. And I think we've committed and principles, you can jump in here too. The more we've committed to that, the more those individualized things are easier to use. So that saves a ton of that time. However, looking at those domains again, kind of broadly, you know, that you, there's also data on the domains for all the students, like how we did on each one. So it's a little easier. Again, is it individualized when you look at the whole domain scores? No, but it'll tell you those areas where you definitely need to put more time into when more kids are scoring on the red on that.
Um, I, I didn't even know we had access to a tool like that two years ago. I know that I've seen it in use this year a little bit. Um, so I don't know. You know, maybe I'm not paying enough attention to my kids when they're sitting in front of iReady or maybe they're too old for it, but, um, I saw, I saw some of that stuff. Um, is there any kind of data that we can be looking at at the end of this year or later this year to look at? How is that individualized curric- curriculum being adopted across our student base? Particularly, I'm looking at these one year, two year behind students.
Yeah.
Where is it working? Where is it not working? Cause I'd like to know as a board member, is that tool working?
Yeah. No, yeah, I mean, ideally.
Is it, is it working?
Ideally, what we'll see is in the spring, iReady will see that growth, but also with the state assessments too, we'll see.
No, no, specifically the usage of a tool that you're saying is to address this. Is there data on usage of the tool? That would be.
You mean of the, of the domain data?
So of the iReady, the tools that we use, the, the personalized instruction that we have.
Instruction is a dream. We've been chasing in education forever.
So what we do, what we do as a district and, and what we've been working on the past, you know, two years is really embedding that into the, into the class and giving kids time to actually working on that in class. So the goal of the whole program is if we're having the kids take these individualized, they're not assessments, these reading tools. So it should be in addition to the reading instruction. So I could tell you, and, and I, and we'll talk more about this as, as we go, but each of our teacher leaders, um, made goals, right? For themselves, um, for their department, for the grade level. I could tell you a couple of those goals was what you're talking about. Um, a goal to, to make sure that their students are using these tools more in class, coming with, coming up with time to do that, and then to have increased results on that based upon, um, that time. So I, I can't talk to what was happening in the past, but I can tell you that we have a more organized approach to give kids more time to work on those individualized skills that bring them to that level. So the whole, the goal of the whole program is you take the assessments in, in September and at the end of the year, but then you're using the product all year. That's going to be in addition to your reading instruction that will give them what they need to, to, to move up. So the more that we are using it, um, you know, the way we're investing in it, we're making time for it. We're, we're hoping the more growth we're going to see, right? I don't know, Prince, do you want to talk about that? Do you see a difference in, in investing that time to use the tools? Wanna, go ahead, Brett.
I Ready also says that reading math uses forty-five minutes of
Yeah.
of individualized work. So based on the diagnostic, one piece that I think you might have been working on with your son, you get what they call your MyPath. And that says based on student, if it's, um, your son, every, every kid gets their home. It's based on diagnosis. If this is where he is, he or she is doing well, this area needs some work. They'll create a unique path to that. Now, how you could monitor some thoughts as you've been talking about this is that we're in, in the middle school, we're asking every kid to complete a math and a, um, reading lesson every single week, which will be catered exactly to what each individual student needs. On a higher level though, if, if the kids theoretically, with its research base, if the kid do forty-five minutes of math and reading and they follow their MyPath and last one lesson for each of the week, there's your, um, your typical growth that they should meet and then the stretch growth. So those are some things that you could look at to see if our kids are really maximizing the use of that. And then you'll see, that may be a way for them to get at what you're looking at.
Yeah. And I, I didn't even know that existed as a, like if there's a place I could go, I could probably click and, and see, oh, there's a place. oh, there's a place where they're just gonna find the weaknesses and they'll be working on that in a lesson plan. But I think what I'm really thinking about is as a board, we've been looking at class level, um, grade level, building level, math since No Child Left Behind, right? We've been staring at those numbers. And this idea of personalizing education has been this theoretical dream. I'm not sure that it's not still theoretical. I I think there's a there's a good chance these tools talk a really great game, but that they're not as magical as, for example, iReady would like us to believe. But I would love, I would love to hear that we're making wins. And if we are making wins there, we need to see that type of individual, we need to find a way as a board to be able to oversee that type of educational process that's no longer gonna be about grade level data. Because as a as a as an industry, schools are now looking at individuals rather than grades. So we maybe are a few years away from that, but that's why I'm asking those questions.
And it should show in this data that we're showing, especially the end of the year data, when you're gonna see where they started to where they're at. The more that we are or have an organized approach to making sure we're we're embedding that into our curriculum and embedding that into our school day. And I think we're doing it with a combination of doing some of that work in class and also some of it for homework, right? So the goal is is that we're gonna see that as we continue to present these through the year. So that's that's the hope and that's the that's the plan. And and um this is year two of really utilizing this tool to the full potential, to be honest with you, right? So we started last year and this year, I have to say, I've been really impressed with how the principals and Terry and the teachers have really made kids more excited about this and they've been taking it more seriously. And there's a much more organized approach to doing that individualized instruction on top of the reading and math instruction. So we're hoping that we're gonna see that data.
I would just like to point out that it is actually one of our priorities this year. Um, academic goal, input various student data into RightPath and monitor the effectiveness, usefulness and impact of the data to identify a student's individual strengths and needs. Faculty and staff will utilize this information to improve instruction. So it is one of our goals and that this year. And we'll be getting mid-year update, end-of-year update. So this is actually something the board, we are working towards. It's it's on paper.
I mean, I I'm just imagining a period magically several years in the future where we're not looking at this, we're looking at individ- an inventory of learning objectives and we're seeing specific things that are winning and losing. And and I know that there's a little bit of that happening down at the classroom level, but the data's not super reliable and it's hard.
So speaking of RightPath, just remind everyone, RightPath is gonna take all of our data tools and put it all in one platform. So it's gonna take iReady cuz this is just one data tool. Um, with everything else that we're combining and we're collecting and we're gonna have this this um and it takes time to build it, right? Um, we're gonna have this for every child, all of their data um to be able to look at, to really make decisions on how to best support. And the thing I just wanna point out too, one big thing of this is we take a look as we do this, when we when we look at individual students, we see what their their profile is. Are they a child who has an IEP? Are they receiving services? Are they E N L child, right? So some of these red with the marks, you know, I bet you, I I if we looked at the data, I bet you some of those kids are identified, right? Those are I are cuz don't forget, every single student um takes this. There's no opting out of this. Every single kid takes it. Um, even if they have an IEP or not, they're taking this. So so that also helps. And and we use this data, our special ed teachers use this data, our R T I teachers, our regular teachers use it um to really to really support that. So I just wanted to point that out, that some of those are are students who are identified. Um, but that's how we base our IEP goals. Um, and I know Stephanie, that's one of her initiatives, is using iReady to assess those IEP goals as well. But anyways, we'll let you keep going, Terry.
Okay. Talk all day about. And the one thing I, yeah, the one thing too I would emphasize is um, you know, iReady is just one data point too. That that and I appreciate the RightPath, um, alluding to that because there is gonna be so much more in there of the whole student, which will which will matter. Um, you can go ahead, Harris, please. So um MTSS at the elementary school, what are what's been happening um in the first few weeks of school here? So um, as you know, we have a monthly uh MTSS data meeting, uh all grade levels. And uh we've had our September meeting, our October one's coming up very shortly. Um, the focus of these meetings again is individual students and and we have to start in September with the fall. iReady was a big data point. Um, but now we're, the next time we meet, we'll have even more data. We have uh locally created reading and math assessments. We'll have eventually um the pair holistic assessment. We'll have the state scores once they're unembargoed. So the, you know, soon, we're gonna have a lot in there. Um, we look at attendance, behaviors, uh anything that the um psychologists and social workers and school counselors can speak to. So it's really trying to, again, not just look at like what I just showed you with iReady, it's going beyond that. Um, we have also, based on that, kids who need those um interventions, tier two and tier three, we've started that work in place students. And um and again, I know we talked about this a lot and uh in each building, I just thought I'd give you a couple of examples of um enrichment as intervention. So in um in principles of what I'm going through, these jump in if you want to. But um in each building, I'll start with obviously with this one at the elementary. So we have students who, based on evidence, on data, um during their either their win time or another opportunity are um doing higher grade level work. Um, we have, you know, the a really neat one, an example is our library at the M E D. Um, we've kind of turned it into the stream um lab in there, which is really neat. So science, technology, engineering, research, that's where the R comes in, and R and math. Um, and we have students coming in for enrichment there, doing a project, one day in the stream room, one day with um art teacher. So combining those together based on their performance, iReady, but others, that's where other data starts to come in too. So looking at those students who the data is showing need that extra, you know, incentive and and challenge, it's happening. Okay, so and we will continue with our monthly meetings. And uh like I said, first one went great, second one will be great too, I'm sure.
I I I wanna just ask real quick about the type, so we don't have data out of um RightPath yet cuz we're still populating a full year of history. Um, on a on assessments, that makes sense. And even the interventions, it's not gonna be clear until we get it all in there. It sounds like what you described is um students that normally would have been referred into something at the beginning of the year. That's happened this year. All of those interventions have been classified as tier tier two or tier three, whereas previously they were just in a pile, I think. Um, or at least they weren't coded tier two and tier three before. Um, does that mean that um all of the students that are receiving those tier two and tier three isn't is receiving a tier two or t- tier three intervention?
Uh huh.
Is there like a, not that we want the the names of students, but numbers of students, type of intervention, type of data?
Yes.
That could be reportable now?
Yes. And then when a student comes in to there, so there's that entrance data, right, that the student used to come in? There's exit data too. So we're gonna work on these specific skills back to the domains or what have you. And then when the student reaches those goals, they can exit from it. Now, they may come back in, maybe in a couple of months when there's other data showing that they're struggling. Um, but yes, and then in the tier two and tier three, the difference there, the delineates between the two is is the data, but the differences are, it could be a smaller group. It could be every day instead of every other. That's kind of what delineates between the two from answering your question.
I is there something pre-conged that RightPath can can deliver to the board up at at a level that's appropriate? Or is that something that's a whole maze of data analysis?
The the I'm I'm not sure. I know the one thing that Andrew, maybe you can help me answer that question. But everything is student-specific on RightPath. So even the teachers, you're assigned your students depending on your your access, right? Because it's individual student data.
Right, we don't wanna look at that. But
RightPath just organizes the data. It's not a, it it just, it's a place where we can put everything in one place or there's a snapshot and the teacher can actually see everything in one place.
But there's no way, the way that iReady rolls up a whole like section or cohort to get, this is what's happening in ninth grade right now, or this is what's happening.
So, yeah, a principal can go on and see and see their whole grade level to see what where the students are.
Lists of students, it's not.
It's lists of students, but it's also color-coded based upon where they're at and what they're at to. So it's a good way of, but it's not, it's not gonna give us like interventions necessarily for that.
I would love just like, and this might be a next year thing, being with all the stuff that's going on in RightPath right now. But the bird's eye view of what's going on, um, the same way we see that in iReady of
Yeah, no, it's not that. It's more of an organizational, it's more of a platform to organize all your data.
But it's it's essentially the school's data warehouse. It's it's the center of student view.
Yep.
And so if we're gonna be looking at that type of intervention, that's the place we'd have to collect it from.
Yeah.
The data team would have to look at that and figure out how to.
Yeah, there's, and we can ask them if they have any capability of doing that, but there's such a mix of stuff on there. You know, you have you have data attendance, so everything is kind of individualized. We have our pair assessment on there. So it doesn't, it it it, they're all so different. Every single data point is very, very different than the other one. So it's more, you kind of have to look individualize in each one of those and do and do data points on each individual. Like, like, we can, we could, we could share with you where the pair social emotional surveys came up. We could show you attendance data, but I I don't know how you would mix that all cuz they're all so different and they don't. The one thing we love about pair is they they interact with everything and they can, they allow everything to get downloaded onto the site. Most programs don't let you do that because they compete against each other, but pair lets us work with everything. So there's no real way, there's no like summary of it all unless it's individual data points.
Andrew, can I just say the other, the other, I think, difficult thing, Matt, would be that this year, and Terry kind of talked about this, we've made a real plan to not to try to execute kids in and out of of services pretty quickly. So it may, on Monday, it may look different than two weeks later where you might have somebody in. And then I in a tier three situation, but by the end of two weeks, they got what they needed and they're back down to tier two.
Yeah.
And then maybe they're, so I think it would be difficult to see, unless you could see it in real time, kind of, it would be a different snapshot, probably month to month, it would be.
Well, I was hoping someone else with real juice has already forced RightPath to figure this out and that we're not gonna have to cook something up custom and that they've got some.
Yeah, no, no, it's more of a holding tool. It's more of an organizational tool.
So I just, we've been hearing about MTSS for the last eighteen months. I would hope at the board level, after we've fully adopted this data warehouse, that there's some way of us telling a story about our MTSS interventions in data, not in. And and so that maybe, once all the data's in there, we then have to go to the data team and ask, how do we make this simple? And so I guess maybe that request is like thrown anchor a year from now?
Yeah.
Not like next meeting, but.
And I would agree with that because I want the energy focused on the administrative level and the teacher level to what they're doing in the classroom. We need to see the ten thousand foot view. And I, so I don't want, I mean, data is very interesting, but I really don't want any of that energy diverted to getting us data. You know, we need to know the overall picture, but I don't want to like make them like focus on, oh, the board needs this. I really, do your thing, do your energy. You know, we don't wanna divert any of those energies. We want just, you write the story. Give us the story, like quarterly halfway through the year, maybe three quarters through the year, but not the drill down, not the everyday. We really, really don't need that level.
And I and I could assure you, Matt, that we're on this. You know, we're we're utilizing our tools. We're we're looking to see what's out there, what the most updated pieces are. Um, MTSS is really hard to assess. I I it is, but cuz the issue with it, like, like Kristen said, it's fluid. It needs to be fluid. It should be changing all the time. When a child is put into tier two, you know, or tier three, the goal is we're moving them to tier two, moving them right to tier one at all times, right? So it's constantly moving and it's constantly, and and you have to have several data tools in order to assess that. And and um one big one, I think the biggest mistake some school districts make is is they're too black and white with it. It doesn't always work that way. And one thing that I'm really adamant on in Chatham and as a superintendent and as an educator is to trust the teachers as well. So we have the data points, but we also have to have the conversation with the teachers. And that's why I think the most crucial part of assessing data are those data meetings. Because you're looking at the data, but you're also taking the recommendation of the professionals who we paid in the position and using their, and we ask them for evidence, but we also respect their their thoughts and their and their um the recommendation based on the data. So it's so hard because it's so many different things we're looking at.
Yeah, and I I just to be clear, and and the reason I'm bringing it up now, even though I'd like to see it a year from now, having worked dozens of really big data projects like this one, if you don't ask the questions in the beginning, the data will not be there when you need it.
Yeah.
But I I'm thinking about resource utilization, which we're responsible for budgeting for, not how is a kid doing in their intervention, which is really the realm of of
Yeah.
you know, the the intervention.
And we're and we're certainly committed to that. And we're looking, Terry and I are talking all the time about what other resources can we give our our tools? And and we have to make sure that it's, you know, when we're doing any resources, we're not just gonna purchase resources because they look good. We need to have an approach where where we are piloting them, where we're looking at them and teachers are are choosing them because that's the only way they're gonna be used, right? If if we have buy-in. So that's certainly something we're we're continuing to do as we go through this journey of MTSS, which is a very hard journey.
And and again, those monthly meetings, that's where um the magic, that's where the magic happens. Where when you're really talking about individual students, because there might be a student who the data's a little low, right? But we talk about individual students and say, hey, right now, because our teachers know them. And maybe we're gonna put that student on, you know, watch till we meet again. And let's see, could it just, you know, they're humans, right? They're human beings and no data is gonna change that. So we're gonna look and see how um what's happened since last we met. And is there growth going on? And and what kind of growth? So we have, I think we're blessed in a school our size. And this is where the data comes in handy, but nothing's ever gonna replace our relationships with the kids. That's what's most critical. And that's the piece that um that really matters truthfully.
All right, let's keep, let's keep going if you don't mind. Oh, go ahead, Don. I'm sorry.
I was just saying, with the collaboration, that's all of it. That's the key to moving forward and figuring out where the gaps are.
Absolutely.
And working together.
And it's hard because kids go through a lot. There's a lot of trauma that some kids are going through. So those meetings are the only, that's the only thing that's gonna pick that up. No assessment will.
So, thank you, Terry.
Sure. So um I have the same data. This is gonna look like, well, it's the same stuff again, but now at the middle school. Um, and I think pretty, you know, it similar, I think what you'll see from iReady with reading. If you if you wanna go ahead and go to math as well. So again, some clearly areas where we need to, you know, again, get that typical growth, that stretch growth that we're gonna work on. Um, these actual pieces of data, I will have updates for you in February um to see if we're on that trajectory. Again, I would just say too, um, iReady is one tool. It we're not iReady school, right? It's just, this is one thing that we use that the domains, I'm gonna keep coming back to that because I think that's the most useful for teachers and um building administrators. That's what's really showing us how kids are doing with names of kids, right? When we're really trying to help them. Um, you go ahead, Harris. So uh again, similar slide here with what's happening with MTSS at the middle school. Um, same thing, we're doing those those data meetings. Um, kids have been placed in tier two and tier three. I I I just wanna stress too, in those meetings, it's all of the grade level teachers, the MTSS staff, myself, um, building administrators, everywhere, everyone's in the room. Everyone has a voice, all the stakeholders. So it's really a pretty powerful meeting because attendance, behavior, things going on at home, all, everything can be discussed with that team. Because then we can try to really, again, personalize the intervention.
And they're by grade, right, Terry?
They're by grade, yes. Yeah. Yeah. So when we go to the middle school, we have a, I think in order at seven, eight, six. I don't know why I remember that, but I do. And that's how we have the the meeting set up. Yep. Um, at the middle school, um, you know, some some enrichment happening there. I said, I'll give you a couple of examples. Um, you know, we have uh students who, again, performing on a really high in a level um math student doing above grade level math. Um, there there are reading um based research projects where the lexile level of what their reading can be changed based on their. the Lexile level of what their reading can be changed based on their, um, their performance on that and what they're researching. And, uh, and again, the what's so cool about manufacturing, I'll just bring that back up, that Brett's using that too as an enrichment opportunity for kids who have demonstrated, you know, not only an interest, but proficiency with, with that manufacturing necessarily, but creating, maybe making a film and communication skills and, and that piece of it. So some really neat enrichment, I think, happening, um, in middle school.
Brett, you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I'll add is that we have a student who's taking courses up at the high school, because he's tested out. He's doing very well and, um, Terry, the rest of it, but the less poor manufacturing thing, I'm really excited for that opportunity. They have an interesting day after school, so I mean, just to get that going. It's going to be a lot of work, but I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I think it could be one of those things like we saw with the robotics team. Especially the chat competing against some of the other buildings. I'm very confident. And our kids all look forward to that.
And robotics in the middle school too, programing it too. Absolutely. Um, you go ahead here. So the, this is the last slide. So high school, um, a bit of a different animal with MTSS and I say that because, um, there's no true universal screener. iReady stops in eighth grade. Um, so I'll, I will share with you that we are having monthly meetings here though. We have started those. Um, students who have failed with, you know, air quotes here, a graduation required regents. So one of the ones that would, as of now anyway, still, um, be required for graduation, um, are, are in something called a, uh, um, study skills lab and where there, it's not just test prep. It's looking into what happened. Is it, is it a reading issue? Is it a content issue? Is it a perseverance issue? Trying to figure that piece out, small sections to really help those students achieve. So the goal would be to take the, uh, January regents and, and pass it. Um, but we also have in the high school, um, academic study halls and we're examining that, how best, because kids coming in from eighth grade to ninth grade in the high school haven't failed the regions, right? They, they're coming into the high school. So, but it doesn't mean that they don't need intervention and support. So figuring that piece out is something where that's come out of our first monthly meeting of how to do that better. And those academic study halls do exist, but maybe we want to examine how we do them, who's placed in them. Um, so that's something we're going to work on throughout this year. Um, and it just, you know.
To add like an instructional piece to it as well, right? So it's not just helping them with their work, but looking at what they need and, and instructing them in reading or instructing them in math based upon where they're at. That's something we're going to be looking at for next year.
It would be, it would be a pretty deep dive to change, but I think we're starting to see that's what we need to do. Um, and you know, again, so the, the tier two and tier three at the high school looks more like, um, how many regents exams is a student working to pass in January? Um, and the, the teachers who, who are teaching those study skills work with the content area instructors as well. Um, but you know, we do find literacy is a key part of why kids struggle and, um, you know, don't always perform super well in the regents exam. So keeping that in mind, those skills are also honed there. And, uh, from an enrichment level to high school, um, well, robotics, we've mentioned, of course. Um, but, uh, I, I had asked Miles and Justin to, you know, what else is happening? So in music, um, the chamber ensemble, that, that piece where, and that's evidence based. So kids who have performed at a certain level, whether it's a NISM level, what have you, have that extra opportunity. Um, in science, um, uh, research projects are happening where they're individualized to how deep into the research the students want to go. They kind of own that piece. Um, and, and what they're taught, not only what their topic is, but how far they're going into the research, um, is individualized. So again, trying to move up the, the Blooms taxonomy of the, of the student really owning that piece more and more at the high school level, trying to really foster that. Um, and again, we're meeting monthly and I think there, those meetings are off to a really great start and, uh, trying to, you know, continuously improve that process too. Okay?
Thank you, Terry.
I just wanted to say what I'm seeing and observing over the last year is a lot of high energy instructional leadership here in this room right now with the principals all, all the way up to the superintendent, Terry, Stephanie. Last year was a real building year is what I saw. A lot of trust being built, a lot of things being in place. Necessary professional development being identified and utilized. Teachers feeling that they could try new things, that they were going to be supported by their building leaders and by people that come in from the district office. Not that that didn't exist before, but I'm seeing it really starting to be more focused. And that is such a positive, uh, for this district. Um, and speaking with people in other districts, they're starting to kind of envy what we're doing here. And it only is going to get better. And I agree with Matt, data is important. It's not that it isn't. But what's happening, as you look at it in an overall sense, I think is going to bring results in terms of the data.
And I'll, I'll just one final thought and I'll wrap this up is, um, I shared with you on, uh, September third. Um, we had a speaker for the opening of school, Alyssa Sabatino, who's, um, really great resource for, she's coming back on November fourth, um, to continue that discussion. So it wa, it wasn't just a one and done kind of thing. And then we're also going to have her work with our interventionists throughout the year four times to, so we're not leaving them kind of alone in the woods here to figure this all out either. To give them best practices and strategies and to talk about what's going well and what we could do better differently. So yeah, thank you, Linda. There's a lot of, a lot of good work going on and I appreciate the team and, and Andrew's leadership as well. So.
And I, I have to say, I, you know, when I first came here, I saw this as a need, right? And, and from what we've accomplished so far with Terry's leadership and with our teachers buying in, it's really impressive of how much, how far we've already come and how we're really moving forward based upon, um, you know, the, the principals and Terry and all the teachers just working together. It's been really exciting to see. So I, I'm excited to see what the future holds and how we can continue to build upon it. So thank you, Terry, for your leadership on this. Thank you, principals, for working so hard with your teachers. It really takes a, takes a community and MTSS is really challenging to manage. I think it's, it's, it's not black and white. Um, it's fluid. It's moving all over the place and it's so, you know, it's changing constantly. So it's not an easy thing to, to manage, that's for sure. So thank you, Terry, for your leadership.
Thank you, Terry. And I want to echo what Linda said exactly. It's very inspiring to see all the positive energy going into it. And even the stu, I see it at the student level. Everyone really is excited. Um, it's positive.
Including the board.
Including the board.
These MTSS meetings are always going to be long board meetings because we're very passionate about it.
Enjoy hearing about it because we're learning too. We enjoy it. It's complicated.
I know, I want to get on the bandwagon here. So, uh, the, the, we as a district tried to do something like RightPath um, pre-COVID and weren't, we're not able to get it done. We bought, we bought the software and even getting anything into the system, um, proved harder than we thought. So, um, the fact that you've got any of the assessments flowing in there right now, um, and that you've got your, um, your referrals in there for the beginning of the year, um, I that's actually like a lot to get done for our first year. Um, hopefully it'll be easier next year.
Yeah, it takes time. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Mike, do you want to do operations?
Just a couple of quick items tonight. Um, we're in the middle of tax season, so we're trying to finish that up. We're down a person. So I want to personally thank Lauren Brahm, my secretary, for putting all the long hours and helping assist with uploading all the tax files from the bank. Um, it's been a lot of work, so I do want to thank her for that. Capital project, Andrew spoke about, um, I agree, it's been bumpy ride, but it's so wonderful to see the kids and the, you know, and the teachers in the, in the, in the building. It's such a nice upgrade. Fifty years, pretty much. So we needed an upgrade and it's wonderful. I was at the girls' senior night soccer game and last weekend, if you haven't seen the Chatham sign with the logo on the, on the high school gym wall in the back. It looks great. They were, they loved it. So it really came out. It's, you know, it's just nice to see these upgrades and and see some positive things. And the last thing is, I just want to share some positive news with the high school staff and administration. So I had a parent stop me, uh, moved from a neighboring district this year and stopped me in the hall and said, oh, are you the superintendent? Like, no, I'm assistant superintendent business and but she said, I just want to let you know, my daughter is thrilled at the district. Uh, she had a tough time at the other district she was at and she said, it's just been a wonderful environment. She's so happy with the staff and administration and she just wanted to share some positive news. So I wanted to let the high school know that. That's all I have for tonight.
Good win.
Thanks, Mike.
Could I just add a positive too, that I meant to say in my update that Brett shared with me? So our modified football team, um, was playing, was it Lansingburg, Brett? And we got this amazing, amazing message. I think it was on social media, Brett? Just saying that the coach from Lansingburg has never come across such respectful, kind, hardworking individuals as the Chatham Modified Football Team. The, I should say, the CIC, right? Chatham, Ichabod Crane Football Team. And it was just like a heartfelt note that he didn't have to do, that he shared with Chatham. He wanted everyone to see, wanted everyone to know. But it just shows that character, you know, our motto, that character counts is really showing and it's showing on the football field. So kudos to the coaches, the principals, you know, the staff and, and, and the parents and the students for showing that when they're out of Chatham, how respectful and how people are noticing. So that was really cool. And Brett, thank you for sharing that with me.
That's great. Um, hi, Jaden. Would you like to do your update now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Is the microphone good?
A little closer maybe?
Okay. Is this better? All right. Okay, so, um, I saw you guys got your magnets. But yes, the, our class did them to show our appreciation for everything you do for the district and I mean, they're not, it's not enough, but you know, it, it'll have to do.
We love them. Thank you. They're beautiful.
Um. I'll put it on the fridge. No, I'm not. I will. Um, so some events that are coming up. The Art Honor Society induction is coming up and, um, the TriM inductions are also coming up. The current TriM members are writing their speeches, um, today and tomorrow, I believe, to induct their, um, new nominees. Um, and along with the music, our first concert is the Pops Concert next Thursday. Um, on the thirtieth at four, if anybody wanted to attend. I know it's so at a weird time, but they tried to fit it in. But with, um, the sports and whatever else is going on, so it's at four instead of seven. And um, Shakespeare and Company's performances, their Julius Caesar, the tragedy of Julius Caesar. Um, that is coming up sometime in November. I think the cup, um, like the second weekend to November. So if you wanted to attend, it's like Friday and Saturday at night and then Sunday matinee. And, um, as for sports, our girls and boys varsity soccer have been seated to go to sectionals. Our girls placed seventh and the first game is this Thursday at three. And the boys placed eleventh and their first game is this Wednesday at three P M. Um, the girls are home and the boys are away. Um, the next, the three next events that are happening to just kind of keep the, um, you know, school spirit going is the Powderpuff Game is on November third at six thirty. And I believe the following Monday is the faculty basketball game or it's the second Monday after. I'm not quite sure. And the robotics team is going to Rochester for their annual robot rumble. And, um, Mr. And Mrs. Fisher are bringing around twenty students. Lot more than last year, I think. And, um, the middle school, they also have their first tech challenge for robotics, which is seven to nine, um, grade seven to nine. And they're actively meeting and they will do two competitions in January, so they're practicing for that. And this past week, there was some field trips. The junior class went to the Copic Falls Ironworks, um, for their annual like hike. And the AP Bio and environmental classes went to the Hudson River for the day in the life snapshot day to collect data on the Hudson River. Um, that was really fun. I, I went to that and that was nice. And our New Visions students also went to New York City last Friday to tour around. I'm not sure what they did because I'm not a part of New Visions, but I know they had a really good time and hopefully they'll keep that tradition going. And um, as for student government, we purchased a foosball table for the cafeteria to play, um, during study halls and during lunches because of the phone ban. Um, we haven't put it out yet, but we're working on a place to, um, find a spot, get all the extra tables out. And we're also trying to get a table for table tennis. We have the rackets and the balls and stuff, but, um, aside from the games, we're starting to plan the blood drive for November and that's like our main goal that we're working on right now. And that's everything.
Thank you. That's, that's really exciting to have a foosball table.
Yeah, it was dope. Well, I think Ms. Rossi bought it for us and then we paid her back and, um, it was basically brand new. So.
That's great.
Yeah.
It's a lot of good updates. Thank you, Jaden.
Do you mind if I ask her a question?
Yeah.
You, you mentioned, you mentioned the phone ban, right?
Okay.
That was a big initiative last year. We've talked a lot about it in policy. We, we, we followed what, uh, state regulations were and it was a lot of organizing to get that going. But I'm curious about the student perspective on how you think it's gone, how, how are students coping without having access to their phones at lunch and study hall? And what else can we do to support? I like the foosball idea. I think that's great. Is there anything else we can do as a district? Um, because the goal is with them is to, is to, um, encourage students to socialize more during those periods, right? Rather than using that technology. So I'm just curious what your perspective is, how it's going, how kids are managing.
Um, I think for the most part, we're like, fine with it. I definitely, if during study halls and lunches, if you're not like with your friends, it's kind of hard. Like you don't want to do your work during that time. But, um, I mean, definitely like my lunch is a big lunch. So it's nice to see like everyone actually like talking to each other and like facing each other. Um, but like during the hallways and stuff, like people are still, I feel like trying, the habit of trying to take it out or like in their locker, trying to take it out, but besides from that, I think having the games and trying to like actually build connections with each other, I think certainly, yeah, that would be a, something, um, I don't know, I lost my thoughts.
So if you, if you can think, I, I put you on the spot. I'm sorry. But if you could think of anything that, any ideas or any thoughts that we can do as a district to help engage kids into doing more of that. Um, I love the foosball. I love the table tennis. But that's stuff that we can, you know, you can bring to my attention and we can talk about it here at the board meeting, see what we can do to support it.
Yeah, we got a, um, a donated box, a donation box for, um, cards and board games and stuff, but I think we're going to buy new just in case. Um.
Yeah. Yeah. So let us know if you have any other ideas, some different things we can do as a district to support that.
Yeah.
Coming up with ideas to kind of motivate and get that, those social interactions brewing a little bit, especially more during lunch.
Yeah.
Where's the donation box?
It's in the cafeteria. Um, Riley Barden, she, um, decorated it and brought it in and.
Okay. So, so get them to any student is what you say.
So students are bringing them in or are you, are you campaigning for like parents to direct to donate things to?
I think that, well, we had our student government meeting today and I think we're going to send out a survey of what games people want.
Okay.
And if they wanted to bring any in, they can, but if not, then we'll look online to, um, buy new games.
Yeah, yeah, let us know. I would definitely donate something.
Yeah, I think you probably have a lot of donations that people would be happy to make. So maybe let us know where we could drop them off.
There, there's a big enough community that cares about this thing. You guys can name pretty much any board game and someone in Chatham.
Yeah. So communicate, let us know what you want.
Yeah.
And don't buy anything and we'll see what we can do.
I think the biggest problem with that was having too many games and then not having enough like storage for it and like not really knowing what to do.
The list.
Yeah. And then don't spend your own money. I think plenty of people would be happy to help.
And we can work on storage, you know, we can work.
Yeah, he told me not to bring it up, but.
And who's going to put all the pieces back in the boxes?
I, I asked you.
Sorry, Mr. Meet.
No, we want to, we want to encourage the socialization. That's part of the story.
This is a good start. This is really exciting.
Yeah.
This makes us all happy.
Thank you and sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no worries.
Thanks, Jaden. Um, for wellness committee, Andrew or Linda?
Yeah, yeah, I'll start and then Linda and Terry, if you guys want to jump in. So we had our first wellness committee of the year. It was really exciting to get back together. You know, there's just so many ideas that come out of this committee. It's really, it's really, um, invigorating, that's for sure. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention to Miles and also you, we are looking for student representatives to be on the wellness committee. So Miles, if you can help spread the word, anyone that is interested, I can give you the dates. Uh, but we definitely want us, some more student representatives. We have a lot of parent representatives. Um, I would say like three would be great. I would say like three would be great. That would be ideal. If more than three, we would take as many because we have a, we have a very lofty, and we have a lot of goals. So we could use the help.
So I think what you can do is for that in between time when the students are trying to grab their phones. Miles, you just put random post-it notes on random lockers and they'll be automatically tagged.
Yeah.
So they'll get to the lockers and decide whether they want to be on the wellness.
Yeah, come to the wellness committee. The thing, the thing that I love about the wellness committee, it's a work committee. So we, we have a lot of things that we need to do, we want to do, right? So, so it was our first meeting. We have, we have, what I ended up doing is I ended up reaching, because it is a work committee. We realized last year, we, we need people to help do the work. So I reached out to all the, if you remember last year, I sent a, I sent a message out to all families and asked for volunteers. We ended up having like 12 family volunteers. There was a couple of people that couldn't, that could not continue. And at the end of last year, we talked about needing more people to help do the work. So I reached out to all the families that were interested and we ended up getting four additional. So we have plenty of parents on the committee, which is great. I think we have, we have four or five that are on it because we wanted more people. So anyways, we, we kind of started by going through an introduction of what our goals are, what we're doing. And then we got ready to work. Then we split up into our teams. We have, just to remind everyone, we have two teams on wellness now. We have our student wellness and we have our faculty and staff wellness. I'm overseeing the student wellness aspect of things. And then Terry and Linda combined are doing the faculty and staff so they can present on that. But what we decided, we're, we're going with a very ambitious goal. But what we decided to do is we are going to plan a very large event and we're going to call it Chatham's Family and Student Wellness Fair. So our plan is, is to have a large fair where we're going to invite community partners. We're going to do all these different activities based on wellness. And we're going to do it for grades pre-K to 12. And we, we are still planning it out. It's early phases, but as you can imagine, there's a lot of work. So we're, we're looking to get as much involvement to help us plan this as possible. But we thought it would be a really good idea to start and do one large activity and get excited about wellness in the district, inviting all of our families to take part. So that's what we kind of planned and that's going to be our goal for the rest of the year. It should be a really fun and exciting activity. So that is it for our student wellness. Terry and Linda, if you want to talk about faculty staff.
We were excited to meet as the staff wellness committee. We have several parents, staff members. Miles is there as administrative representative. And we were delighted because some of what we discovered in our survey about what people wanted was being covered at the November 4th Staff Day. One of the things I'd mentioned, I think Andrew, you brought this as an idea from your former district. And that was to do the salad buffet where the administration is bringing in the lettuce, I think, and everybody's contributing something to build a salad.
Now, we put a survey out for that.
Oh, okay.
Then we heard some discussion where some people were interested in maybe doing their own lunch. I don't know what, do you know what those results are?
It seems like there's a lot of interest in lunch on their own. And I think, and I think part of that is people who don't live.
This came up after Linda.
And people who don't live locally don't often get a chance to eat in the area. And so it was kind of a, this is a opportune time to do that. So that's.
Can we restrict them to salads and healthy choices?
We may not be doing salad, but it is a great event, but we'll do it again in the future.
But you do have some other things going on that day too. So I think we're off to a good start. Lots of conversation and it's an exciting committee to be on.
And some of those activities on November 4th came right out of the survey last year that we, that we shared with you. You know, walking and running and volleyball and meditation and using art as a therapeutic. So there's, there's a number of things that came right out of the survey. So for this first quarter, that's kind of going to be one of our big wellness, you know, events that we'll do. So it's nice to see how it aligns.
And we'll report back to that after the November 4th date.
Any questions, comments? Okay. New business? We have.
Do you mind if I just talk about what this is for, just so everyone knows? So as you know, we have a lot of new administrators here in Chatham and I think a big part of people's success is having a coach or a mentor. So all of our new administrators, I've been working really hard to make sure we pair them up with somebody who can really mentor and coach them. So as, as you're going to see, this, this person is actually, for this specific person, this is the facilities director, right? We have a new facilities director, Ethan Statler, who is new to schools and directing of facilities. So I really, Mike and I talked, we really wanted it to be somebody local, somebody that could support him, that knows the community. So we reached out to Ichabod Crane. I reached out to the superintendent, first of all, to see if she thought her person there who has a great reputation and who knows Chatham might be interested. She reached out to him. He said he was. So you're going to approve a contract. It's an independent contract with Dan Doyle, who is the facilities director from Ichabod Crane, who comes very highly recommended and knows Chatham well. So this is an opportunity for our current, our brand new facilities director to be mentored by somebody local who knows the job and knows the community. So I just wanted to give you a little context for that.
Matt, did you have?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. R29, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the contract with Dan Doyle for mentor services for the 2025-26 school year at the fee of $3,500 and authorize the superintendent to sign the agreement. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's great to have such a good mentor. And then Andrew, did you want to talk about this one or just?
I think I have to really. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay. R30, be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the proposal for student fundraising submitted by the Chatham Central School District softball team and the projected amount of $10,000 after expenses. Such proposal is to solicit donations from patrons and a projected amount of $10,000. All fundraising must comply with the Board of Regents Rule 19.6 and School District Policy 5251. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, the ones that go, should be fun. Okay. Consensus Agenda. R31, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda J through L as written. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could I just add something?
Yep.
I just want to thank Mike Stead for his commitment to the district. He's been here 20 years as a teacher and also as an assistant principal. And also as a, I think he did some curriculum work for a year, a teacher on assignment. But we're really excited for him. He's, he's accepted, I'm sure he wouldn't mind that I shared, but he accepted a principal job at Avril Park at one of their elementary schools. So he'll be, you know, it's, it's bittersweet. We're happy for him and excited for him, but we're going to miss him greatly. So he'll be working with us until January 23rd until he starts his new position. So I just wanted to publicly thank him for his service to the district.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Lost my spot. Give me a second. So it's okay. My computer shut down. Future agenda items. Yes, we can just note that our November 4th meeting, we will have budget calendar adoption, special ed monthly update, principals bi-monthly update and the ENL update. Public comment?
Wait, hold on. Quick, quick comment there. Just so, uh, this is great. I love it's on the agenda. So I don't have to surprise anyone.
Yeah.
Are we going to have NISlat numbers at, in, at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Awesome. I would love to see them per grade.
Sure.
Or is that just get published? You know, I, I tried to look at the website and it, first of all, it's last year's report card, which isn't, you know, doesn't have the 20 new kids in it.
Still embargoed.
Yeah.
Not, that's not, they haven't fully released yet, but by that point, that one should be good to go.
Yeah, with the NISlat numbers, because that's how the kids are placed. We, it's so, it's, it's less about the test score, more about where the kids are.
Yeah. They don't show the NISlat numbers on the report card anyway, but I was wondering if there's some other website where they exist. But maybe that's only, only you guys have that maybe.
About a public, I would think it would be publicly. I don't know.
Maybe, maybe not because in some schools, there's only like one kid.
Yeah, I would have to look.
Which is maybe a consideration here, but I would love to see where all our 20 new kids are landing there on the spectrum of.
What's our, what's our number this year? I don't mean to put you on. We'll talk on that.
Yeah, I, it's still, you know, in fifty-ish.
Yeah, under that.
A little under that.
So half of them are like basically brand new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty consistent to last year. We got a couple of new ones and a couple moved out. So it's about, as far as I know, it's still about fifty.
Always the year before.
Yeah, no, the year before. Last year was our big jump. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been consistent from last year. We'll have that all for you next week. Or next two weeks.
We can have our second public comment. I'm just going to read the comments on it. Public comment for the purchase of, purpose of the second public comment period is for the BOE to hear comments that are specifically related to items included on this evening's agenda. During this public comment period, which will not exceed 20 minutes in total duration and three minutes per speaker, the Board of Education will hear comments from students, parents, employees, district residents, district property and business owners, other individuals who have received prior approval in accordance with Policy 1510 will also be heard at this time. The POE president will recognize speakers who will proceed to the spot provided for public comment, state their full name, organization they represent, if applicable, and the agenda item they wish to discuss. Speakers are expected to comply with Policy 1510 in regard to content. Just make sure you're signed in, please.
David O'Connor, Village of Chatham. Do you need social security number? No. All right. And here to comment on just very briefly Terry Bordell's academic update. So specifically to the MTSS, I thought it was a very fascinating presentation and very useful. And I do hope the board revisits the topic. Because, you know, it's an excellent topic. The next time though, I, I want to come where it's the best of Matt Fish questions and not all of his albums. All right. Then the thing, the middle school principal brought up an interesting point about where the, where the assessments helped break out student or students who were taking now high school classes. So I thought, I wondered, and what I didn't hear then was anything regarding community college courses, college courses, Questar courses, that if there was anything in the assessment that helped identify students who would really benefit from say those programs. The other thing I missed was anything on our 5% population that struggles with English as a second language? Just how the, the data, the information is reflecting progress in that area. And the one thing missing from tonight's meeting that I was surprised at, so, is the chronic absenteeism. I thought that was something you were going to revisit on almost just a, an every board meeting report, just the data. Because now, right, we're seven weeks in. That's roughly 35 days. It would be interesting how many high school students have missed four or more days. So that we're kind of staying on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a reason for executive session tonight. And it's due to the medical, financial credit or employment history of particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Do we have a motion for executive decision?
Motion.
Session. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we join? Something weird, yeah. Oh wait, here it comes back. Sorry, now I have it. I don't know what's going on with my computer. Give me one sec here. Right here. Where do I read? Why am I here? Oh, can I have a motion to appoint Andrew Court as district clerk pro temp for executive session?
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
So something happened.